Are there any late items? No. Okay, we will go on to delegations. And our first delegation this morning is the RDOS 2015 Goals and Objectives and Budget Presentation. And Sandy Crotto, the Finance Manager for the RDOS, is here to talk to us about it. So, welcome Sandy. Thank you.
All right. I keep going here. So, I just wanted to come briefly and talk to you about both the Regional District Budget and the Okanagan-Semilcamin Hospital Board Budget. Excuse me. I just have a brief presentation and if it's all right with you, I'll go through both budgets and then...
Sure. And then we can have questions.
Sure. So, our budget process, unlike municipalities, is a little different. We have not one budget, but 137 separate budgets, one for each service. Each of our services has to be self-sustaining, so we have to maintain our budgets independently. Anything that's raised in those budgets stays with those budgets and stays in their reserves. Sorry, my not... There we go. All right. It sounds really loud in my head. So, and because we do have separate budgets, only those who participate in a service pay for the service. We start our budget process in the fall. We start with a baseline budget, so we start with the prior year's budget and only allowing for inflationary changes or contract changes that we know are coming along. Anything we want to do differently in a... from one year to the next, so substantial program changes or how we operate or additions of personnel or equipment or those types of things, come to our Budget Committee as what we call program changes. So, that gives the committee the opportunity to discuss them and basically buy into them. If they want them to be included in this year's budget, they have to approve them and then we put them into the budget. The point rep with this budget does include program changes, and I will highlight those program changes as I move through it. We have had two budget workshops with our board so far. One was in December with a brand-new board and one was in January. We got our first reading of our budget in... on January 22nd, so this gives us a draft version of our budget, and it will stay draft until the board approves it later in March, hopefully. The draft budget gives us the opportunity to do this exactly, to come out and have public consultations. So, since January 22nd and right through till the beginning of March, I'll be going throughout the region, talking to the member municipalities and all of the electoral areas to get feedback from the public on the budget and all the councils. We must by law adopt our budget by March 31st. So, overall, at the high level, our budget is down slightly from 2014. We're at $37 million versus $40 million in 2014. The biggest swing there is in our capital budgets. Our operating budgets stay pretty much status quo, but our capital budgets, depending on what projects are on or off in a particular year, can swing our budgets. And the municipal debt repayments for us is a flow-through, so that's of the debt that IRDS holds for municipalities. So, on our budgets, it's just a collection from the municipalities back to the Municipal Finance Authority. So, it's an in-and-out for us. And then the overall hospital budget is up slightly this year at 15... from 15.7 to 16.2. And I will get into that in a little more detail, why it's gone up, as I hit the hospital budget. So, the town of Asouis pays for two types of services with us. They have regional services, which involve all of our electoral areas and municipalities. And those are things that we have at a regional level called General Government, which is basically the running of our regional offices. The Solid Waste Management Plan, 911 Emergency Planning, Regional Trails, those types of things. And then, of course, there's the services that Asouis shares with Area A, being the museum and the arena. So, we have a couple of shared services in there as well. So, the factors that are affecting our requisition this year, as always, assessment mix comes into play because the players in the service share those services based on their assessed values, how the assessed values change and how they change in relation to other areas and other players comes into play. So, Asouis this year has an assessment increase of about 1.1%. That's lower than the RDOS average at 1.9. So, what that means is in those regional services, if we were collecting the exact same amount of money from last year to this year, Asouis's share would be a tiny bit smaller because their assessments have gone down in relation to everyone else's in a different fashion. Same with the services you share with Area A. Area A had the largest assessment increase in the region this year. So, there's been a shift again between what you share with Area A by a little bit, a little bit less is coming from Asouis, a little bit more from Area A. The other factors that are affecting the budget really are within our regional services. So, in our general government, we've had some changes there that are affecting all of the players this year. So, the... one of the factors is our change in surplus. Because we carry independent budgets, anything that's raised in a budget flows through to that budget in the next year. That's what we call our prior-year surplus. And that can change from year to year, given different factors. And unfortunately for 2015, our prior-year surplus, which was really a revenue source for us, has gone down by $100,000. So, that means even if we were doing exactly the same thing that we had done last year, we'd be looking for an extra $100,000 coming from the tax requisitions in 2015. The other items are those program change requests I talked about earlier. Almost all of them this year are affecting the general government services. We've asked for an increase in our Human Resource Coordinator from .5 to a full-time FTE. We've... we're looking for a consultant, a one-year consultant, to address the regional airport analysis. So, the federal government is thinking of divesting of the airport in Penhticton, and we are needing to hire a consultant to see what our role, if any, will be in that. So, we've asked it for $30,000 for that. We've also have a $10,000 ask for a lean management program, just a different way of managing, and it's more of a conceptual and integrated approach to how we do things. And we also have, within our Solid Waste Management Plan, which is a... ask for a business consultant to help with the recycling of... moving the recycling more into the educational portions of recycling for the commercial and multifamily units. So, those are the asks that we're looking for there. So, when we put all those together, what we're seeing for 2015 for Asouis is an increase of approximately $37,000. The majority of that, as I said, is in regional services, coming from those changes in... in... I'm sorry, I missed one very important one there that I'm just going to go back to. And that is the Regional District. Our one other big program change is the ask for a renovation of our offices in Penhticton. We've had... those offices were built in 1981, and they've remained pretty much unchanged since then. We started a process last year of figuring out what we were going to do about that. We hired a consultant to see if we thought we had to... we were going to have to rebuild and move on or find a different location. As it turned out, in our processes, the consultant has determined that our building is more than big enough. And if we wanted to rebuild it, even at the size it is, it would be in the millions of dollars. But our office is big enough. It's just been chopped up and changed around so much, it's no longer efficient. And if we were to renovate it, we can gain about 30% space, which is more than we need now and into the future. And the cost to do that would be $435,000. So, that's the route we took or have asked for in the budget at this point. It's a $435,000 project with about... we have about 210 of that in reserves. The other $225,000, we are looking for as a tax requisition increase. It's a one-time tax requisition increase for 2015. What that equates to, because it's a regional service, that $225,000 is on average about $4 for the average household within the region as a one-time increase. Now, this will make more sense of why we have an increase on this page. So, yes, the regional services are the main factor that's increasing the requisition this year. And as I said, those are the change requests and that change in surplus that's driving that. So, that's what we're seeing is those regional services increasing is coming from the projects that we're adding and that loss of surplus from last year. The shared services, as you'll see, are pretty much status quo. The museum stays the same because that's the debt servicing cost, so it doesn't fluctuate from year to year. And then the arena is up slightly, just under $5,000 from the previous year. The other boards we collect are a flow-through. They set sterile insect release and OBW, Okanagan Basin Water Board, set their own budgets with their own boards, and then they make their requisitions to the players in that part. Both of those budgets have actually not decreased. What we're seeing from the decrease here is effect of not only your assessments going down, but our Regional District assessments overall going down in relation to all the other players. So, they're looking for the same amount of money. Our pieces have... our piece of the pie has just gotten smaller this year in relation to those two programs. So, what that equates to for the average household, that kind of an increase, is approximately $8 a household. So, when we take it down to the house level, we're seeing approximately 147 overall to support the 2015 Regional District ask this year. That's about 51 cents per thousand of assessments. This is just meant to give you a quick representation of how that breaks out. So, you'll see the arena's at 24 cents of that, which is about $69. Regional Services at 15 cents is about $44 per household. The museum is about $12 a household. And what flows through to those other boards at 8 cents per thousand equates to about $23 per household. So, that's the quick down... low-down on the Regional District budget. There's just a couple of quick slides here on the Hospital District. The purpose of the Hospital District is to provide capital funding for healthcare facilities in the region. That's with equipment and the construction. We support 40% of the Interior Health Capital Budget for... annually. So, what that looks like for 2015 is that our budget is up to five... our tax requisition will be up from 5.2 million to 5.5 million. The overall increase in the budget is resulting from a program that was put in place in 2014 with the previous board we had. There was... with the announcement of the Penhticton Regional Ambulatory Care Wing, the board of the day agreed... we were looking at how we would finance that large of a project. It's a $325 million project with our share being 122 million of that. So, the discussions at the time were that we would go down a set plan of increasing on average the average cost per household in the budget by $5 annually. So, in 2014, that was $91 a household. Took it up to $96 per average household for 2015, with that increase being to support whatever IHA needed and also whatever's left from that to increase our reserves as much as possible. We... this plan was put in place to hopefully have approximately 58 to 60, so almost half of what we need to finance the hospital addition from reserves, and then the rest would have to be from the venture. That's the route we set in 2014. That's what's still being reflected in this budget. So, of that total of $5.5 million of tax requisition, Asouis's share of that is about $473,000. That's up from 2014 at approximately $452,000. So, about a $20,000 increase there to support that hospital budget. So, that's a quick run-through for you.
Well, thank you very much, Sandy. And I probably should have said at the beginning that the RDOS, for those people who are not... don't know, includes six towns, am I correct, and eight regional districts. So, the towns are... town cities are Summerland, Penhticton, Oliver, Asouis, Karamias, and Princeton. And then the regional districts that surround those.
The electoral areas.
So, they all meet at a board table. I'm a director on the board. Councilor Rhodes is the alternate, and we've both been to meetings, so we both attend and get the information, or one of us does anyway. And it's a kind of a way of trying to deal with local issues. So, that's partly why this is there. Some things definitely, when we go to meetings, are more the... they're regional district parts, some are town parts. So, we kind of all hear it, and we try to understand how it all works together and how we can work together to... for the betterment of the Okanagan-Semilcamin. So, thank you very much for that. And I know Sandy's been busy going to all of the regional district people. Do you have to go and visit them too, plus all the towns?
Oh, the electoral areas?
Electoral areas, yes. You're quite right. So, I know that Councilor Rhodes has some questions, and we'll let everybody have a turn to ask. Sandy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor McCorduff. Well, great job again. It just amazes me how you put this budget together every year. It's probably the most complicated and complex thing I've ever seen, but somehow or another you do it every year, so my compliments to you. I have a couple of questions regarding our relationship with the Regional District, and one of them has to do with our desert park facility. It's kind of where our racetrack is, and we have some buildings and that kind of thing. So, I have two questions, one unrelated to that. But my question about desert park is, are you aware of any regular, ongoing budget amounts that go from the Regional District to the town of Asouis that are earmarked for that facility? And that's... and my other question is about our kind of controversial airport thing. We're looking at repurposing it. We have some opportunities and that kind of thing. And we're in the process of gathering information right now to help us with the decision-making process. And one of the things that comes up quite often is the Penhticton Airport. And I'm wondering, and I'm not... I don't want to know anything about the airport, but I want to know about the financial implications to us in Asouis, if that plan... and I know there's hardly a plan, but if it moves forward, how that would affect us here in Asouis as well.
So, on the first one, the desert...
Desert Park.
Park. I don't know of anything in particular, unless... excuse me for not knowing this, but if it's part of our regional parks, there could be amounts that are paid, but I don't think it is, as far as I know. So, no, I don't know of anything in particular going directly for the support of that desert park. For the airport, what the impact would be, that's what we were... when I mentioned that consultant that we want to hire, that's the whole purpose of that, is to see what the role would be, if there's any, and what the implications would be for the region if it did. I would imagine, and I'm only speculating at this point because we've not even gone down this road, if that was to be taken on by the region, it would be a long ways out still at some point. And I would think we would have to create another regional service to support that. So, then the players, whoever were in that, would have the financial implications at that point. But at this point, that's what the whole first step of getting a consultant and moving down that road. We don't have the in-house expertise for that, so that's why we need some help on that one.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor King.
Thank you, Mayor McCorduff. I just wondered here, on your budget, you transferred just over 10 million from reserves, and then you transferred 4 million out of reserves. To me, it kind of seems redundant.
In the hospital one?
No, in the whole OSRDH budget.
Yeah, that's the hospital budget. So, why we do that is because it's just a flow thing that we have to do to show where the money's coming to and from. That $10 million is... you'll see it in both years there for the...
Right.
That was because in 2014, when they approved the hospital addition, they asked us to include $8 million into our budget, even though they weren't going to spend it. In that year, we had to include it in our... we had to amend our budget to show it, so going in and out. And the other side of that, yeah, the... I know it looks strange, like, why don't we net them? But it's more to help with the flow of seeing where money's coming from and what surpluses we have in a given year to put back in there, is really all it. It's an accounting thing.
So, do you sort of have a certain amount you'd like to have in reserve?
We... well, for the hospital board, as I mentioned, they're trying to build those reserves up to that approximately $60 million mark. So, that $10 million coming out of reserves is part of that number because we're already using it back and forth.
Okay.
But there is a goal in that one, yes.
Thank you. Anyone else? No. Oh, yes, Mr. Manco.
Hi, Sandy. Yes, thanks very much for the presentation. You ran over fairly quickly, but could you just review the new program areas? I know that there was to hire a consultant relative to the regional airport analysis, which... and your office renovations?
Yep.
And there were a couple more. Could you just...
There was the request to increase our Human Resources Coordinator from .5 to a 1 FTE, looking to expand for that person. We're looking to expand their role in occupational health and safety in our outlawing services, such as the fire... our volunteer fire departments and our recreations that aren't necessarily within our building at 101 Martin Street. So, helping increase the occupational health and safety plans throughout those areas, plus other duties, but that's one of the main ones. We had the regional airport and the Lean Management Program, which is... I don't know if you've heard of Lean Sigma. It's started by Toyota, the whole concept of looking at how you do business, why you do it the way you do, and how you can do it better. So, looking for areas of waste, looking for areas of pushing down decision-making to the people who need it so that things can interact better with the customers at face-to-face. And the Solid Waste Management Plan was hiring a business technical support educator for one year, the $12,000 on that one, again, to enhance recycling opportunities with commercial and multifamily units.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Sandy. I certainly appreciate your expertise on this, and we can certainly know where to find you if we have any extra questions.
Yes, and we accept that there's... the entire budget document is on our website under Popular Links. People think that's a funny place for it, but I think it's very popular. It is 526 pages. It's a large document, but we do encourage people to take a look at it and get back to us with any comments or input.
And certainly, it cuts down the number of pages right away if you're just looking at Asouis and Area A, so...
Yes, yes. We did try to structure it this year a little differently so you can narrow in a little faster on the areas that affect you, so hopefully, that's well received.
Good. Well, thank you very much, and you're certainly welcome to stay. The next... I think we were expecting Cameron Vaughn, but he doesn't seem to be here. Would it be acceptable to go with the Asouis and District Museum because they're here? Okay. And I've asked Sandy if she'd like to stay, Mr. Hassan, because she might be interested in what you have to say.
We don't want anything that comes as a surprise.
So, next on our... we were supposed to have the Organics Waste Management, but if Mr. Vaughn comes, then we can put him after this. And our next thing is the community's new museum. And Mr. Hassan is going to give us an overview. He sent us quite a lot of information that we've all digested, and we've got it committed to memory. So, we will be happy to have Mr. Hassan talk to us about what's happening now and what's going to happen next. And welcome to our other two members of the board. Thank you for coming as well.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and Council. Thank you for this opportunity to bring Council up to date on where we are. This project, in some respects, seems like it's been going on forever, and it will go on forever from here. So, somewhere along the line, we hope to have a fruitful conclusion. But we wanted this opportunity to bring Council up to date as to where we are because we've now drawn a bead on our Phase 1 target. And what we want to stress from the beginning is the title on this slide is that this is about the community's new museum. This is not the Asouis Museum Society's museum. We're simply the agents, if you will, of bringing about something for the whole of the community. So, Phase 1 and the target is to open in the spring of 2017. By very brief background, because most of you are aware of this, we began with the referendum in 2011, in which the community fortunately supported the purchase of the Home Building Center property on Main Street as the new home for the museum. That's no small feat, and the community deserves a great deal of both accolade and our appreciation because to say yes to a tax increase in this day and age is a significant thing. But the community felt that there was sufficient advantage for the long-term benefit of community. After that, we began... we sorted through applications from a number of architects, shortlisted to three, selected one, and contracted to have the schematic design done for the new museum in 2012. We were a little surprised when the schematic design came back with about a $4.5 million price tag. You could hear the sound of breath being intaken. But nevertheless, we looked at the plan, and we looked at the rationale, and we looked at the reasons, and we concluded that it was a good plan, but it was clearly beyond what we could reasonably afford. And so, in 2014, while leading up to the end of 2014, we focused on the refining of the focus. What is it is manageable? What is it really needs to be done? And what would be a Phase 1 target, given that the museum will be the community's museum for 50 or more years, probably more years? And so, we could afford to divide the project into phases and move in a measured way toward that larger plan that the schematic design outlined. So, this year, we finalized the Phase 1 plan. It was done at the end of last year, but we've now got the reports in hand. We've shared that information with Council. The renovations will start with the possession of the building, October 1st of 2016, and they will... are projected right now to take three to four months. We always know with projects that such predictions are optimistic, but nevertheless, we are hoping very clearly to be able to open the new museum on Main Street in the spring of 2017. So, that's the timeline. We included in your package, and we have electronic versions of this, which are a little easier to see if anyone is interested. But to give you some sense of the museum plan, the front facade will be cleaned up in the sense of simplified somewhat, but nevertheless, the character of the building will remain. And we're going to have an angled front entrance way, which will allow people to come in on an angle rather than straight in the front, so it'll shield from wind effects and so on as people walk into the building. These are side views of the building because, as you know, it is a two-story building, about 6,000 square feet on each of two floors. And the Phase 1 focus will be on public access to the main floor only. The cost of making a public access possible to the entire building was one of the factors that we had to cut back on and use as phasing in the future. So, Phase 1 will focus on public access to the main floor of the building, but nevertheless, there are things that we need to do to make that possible. The main floor drawing shows largely that the area will be an exhibit gallery. The existing structures within that building do not meet current provincial code. Now, they're fine for the current occupant, but when you go to renovate a building, you get caught with new code and implications. And so, at the very least, we would have to spend a fairly significant amount of money fireproofing and altering the existing structures, less than the cost of replacing. But we felt, after going back and forth, that we really needed to look at replacing those internal structures, and so that is part of the Phase 1 budget. The mezzanine area here, which will... over top of the front entrance and then provide a boardroom, meeting room, an office, some workstations, and so on, is... sorry, the mezzanine is over the main floor, and I'll come back to that. Forgive me. The main floor will have a reception area, a gift shop. It will have a small sort of kitchenette servery, just a small one, two washrooms, and an elevator shaft. It will have the stairwell going downstairs. The existing stairwell is not acceptable under provincial code. It needs to be wider, and it needs to be longer, and so that much needs to be modified. Similarly, the stairs that currently come up the outside to the offices on the mezzanine now need to be put on the other side. So, they're in the mezzanine. The mezzanine will have a boardroom, an office, some workstations, and then the elevator access because we felt, and we'll mention this a little later, that the time to look at an elevator in this building, at least the provision for it, is at the very beginning. And it would allow for a movement of people and goods from the basement, or the lower floor, if you will, to the main floor, to the mezzanine. Increasingly, our volunteers require a little assistance, and so one never knows. But in this day and age, if you're going to renovate a public building, you have to think of access to all people at all times, and that's washrooms and a movement between floors and so on. And this is a sneak peek inside, an artist's concept. I know it's hard to see on this screen, but it gives you a little sense. This is if you were standing, looking west. The angled entrance is in on the right and the left-hand side. You see the mezzanine area above. You'll see the log building, which is, of course, a very central feature of this museum in the center of the main floor. But we're going for an open area. We have 20-odd displays, tentatively designed for installation in the museum, and so we're going to have to make creative use of space. The lower floor, the part of this that is part of Phase 1 is the archive room. This room... that's interesting. Tap the screen, and it goes backwards.
Can't touch the screen.
Ah, I won't tap the screen again. Touchy feeling. The archive... The archive room downstairs will be a construction in the Phase One. It is a room with a contained environment control, and it will be the place where we store those sensitive pieces of our collection, which either currently, thanks to the Oliver Museum, are temporarily housed there, or are at some risk in our current museum. So this will be escorted use only to the lower floor because of the public access issue, but things like the multipurpose room, the fuller development of the storage shelving and all that sort of thing will have to wait until Phase Two or beyond. So here are some of the features of the building that are included in Phase One. First and foremost, we're going to meet all provincial codes. That's not an argument. You have to do it. There's about a $350,000 price tag to do that alone. Those are things that must be done. The entrances all have to be changed, all the doors have to be widened, they have to have panic bars. It's a given. We have to cut a new entrance exit into the west-side basement wall because there is insufficient exit capacity on that lower floor, even though we're not going to public access initially, even for staff, there has to be access. So we'll have to cut through the concrete wall and up onto the side lot and so on. We need to strap and insulate the inside of that building. It's a poor concrete building, very strong building, but has little or no insulation, and code requires that this be done. We have to sprinkler the building because of fire protection. That's a cost. We have to redo completely the electrical and plumbing, as none of it is standard and up to par, and although we will have washroom provisions downstairs in the Phase Two development, we will look after the rough-in of the plumbing and the electricity and everything for subsequent phases in the first phase of the project, because the time to do that is in the first phase of the project. The archive room, I've already mentioned, will be constructed, and the environmental controls, the heating, air conditioning, moisture controls, lighting controls will all be put in place. In the ceiling of the main floor of the building, and that's a 16-foot space between floor and the current girders at the top, we will have a system called a Unistrut Grid installed. This is essentially powder-coated black metal. It's channels. Think of it as a suspended ceiling without the ceiling tiles. But what it does is it allows for all future electrical service, lighting service, hanging displays, and so on, so that in the future, if you need to modify lighting, you simply get up on the grid and tap into the system and move the lights around. So it has long-term flexibility, also allows for the hanging of display panels and information and so on. The elevator, we've already mentioned. We believe that it is a priority to try to fund the installation of an elevator. If we have to cut back, at the very least, in Phase One, we will do all of the cut-ins in the basement, on the main floor, and an extension of the roof because of the headroom in there. The elevator, I think, is a priority, and we will look for additional funding for that under an access grant. The mezzanine we're proposing to replace is, again, I've already mentioned, because it makes use of aerial space. Little challenge in the building, 16-foot floor-to-ceiling. However, you need 17 feet to have two stories, because you have to have eight feet and a foot for a floor and so on. So this will require some modification of the ceiling truss system over it in order to provide the additional, but that has to be done for the elevator as well, but it is a cost factor that we've had to allow for. The front facade and entrance way I've alluded to already. The roof upgrade. The roof on the building is currently judged to be in good shape. It's going to be about nine years old when we move in, but the architect has talked to us about what we want to do and has recommended that we spend the $150,000 it's going to cost to do a redo on the roof, which includes the installation of a layer of insulation, which will give us better environmental control and protection over time. The other thing is, and this is the last element here, we have looked very closely at the installation of a photovoltaic power system on the roof of the building. It will be 50-odd panels. Each of these panels has an inverter, which means that the photoelectric energy is converted automatically to electricity. It's then fed to an inverter converter system and interfaces with the building on the one side and Fortis on the other, so that any surplus power generated over time will be on a credit back to the Fortis system. Now, this is about $100,000 installation, about $60,000 for the panels, and then the rest is the inverter and so on. But the system that's being proposed for the roof of this building will produce approximately 21,000 kilowatt-hours a year, which is, if you compare it with my home, it's about double my electrical consumption a year. So if you want to convert it again in terms of my bill, it's about $350 a month gain. And if you multiply that out over the lifetime of the system, which is 25 years, there is a reasonable payback at about 16 or 17 years. Again, a public building, a building that will be in existence for a long time. Utility costs will only go up. This system will produce electricity at a rate now, a current dollars of 0.9 cents a kilowatt-hour is a fixed cost, and so it makes good sense to take a look at that option and alternative. So, all the better then, according to the architect, that we redo the roof and then do the solar installation on top of it, so that there is no damage to the roof or alterations of the plan. And so while we could economize and eliminate these things, without question, you look at the long-term benefit and the long-term value from something, and I think with a public building, we have to take a look at the longer-term view rather than the shorter one. Means a stretch for more money, but we'll go for it, and that's what we're going to do. Exhibit planning is already underway. We're developing both a short-term and a long-term plan. The exhibits will tell the story of our community. They'll feature the faces and voices of the area, but we are committed to retaining a small-town feel. We're not the Museum of Anthropology. We're not the Royal Museum. We're the Asuas and District Museum and Archives. And so that doesn't mean we go chintzy and cheap. It does mean, though, that we try to maintain a display that is authentic for the community and the area in which we live, and so that's the thing that we're shooting for. We're going to completely refresh displays. If need be, we could simply move things, but we don't think that that's what the community would really value and benefit from. So we're going to refresh existing displays. We're going to reconfigure selective displays, because we've had the benefit of a lot of floor space, and now we're going to be compacting, and so we have a number of creative ideas of how we could do that. And of course, we're going to be adding new displays, exhibits, and themes to the museum. So this planning is well underway as well. The Phase One budget, our target right now, folks, is bricks and mortar. Bricks and mortar is the harder money to come up with, in the sense that there are relatively few sources of money for these kinds of projects. Secondly, it's bricks and mortar. Most of the support programs, Canada Cultural Spaces, B.C. Creative Spaces, does not make an allowance for professional fees, architect fees, drawings, and so on. It's only for bricks and mortar. And so this is the budget that we've come up with. The construction costs are 1.52 million, a contingency of 232,000, an inflation allowance, because remember, we had our estimates done and redone. We're allowing an inflation allowance of about 72,000, and so it puts our total construction cost at 1.857 million. Now, there are other costs, as I've alluded to, the so-called soft costs. These are driven, in the case of professional fees, primarily as a percentage of the cost of the project. And so if the project is more, there are more, and if the project is less, it's less. And then there's an allowance for permits and surveys and fees and so on. So this is the budget we're shooting for. This is what we're talking to Cultural Spaces Canada and others about. This is the Phase One target that we're hoping to raise, but as I have said to you on behalf of the Museum Society on a number of occasions, we recognize that we can have all the museum we can afford. We cannot borrow money. We're a nonprofit society, and so we're going to have to make do with what we can raise, but we have set our target, and we built our case, and we think that it is not an unreasonable case to shoot for. Now, if we have to make cutbacks, we will make cutbacks. We know some of the areas in which it can be done, but we would hope that we can retain the solar system and the roof upgrade and the elevator and things like that, and so that is part of our target and ask. Fundraising plan is well underway. We're seeking grants, sponsorships, and donations. I want to offer an apology to Council today on behalf of Martha Collins. Martha is the chair of our Legacy Committee, but she had clients this morning and was unable to attend, but she asked us to extend her regrets. We're pursuing some naming rights in the building. Whether we'll be successful or not, it is another way of raising funding for buildings. We're asking programs, foundations, corporations, groups, and individuals to help us in raising the funds we need. As I said a moment ago, our initial and primary focus is on the bricks and mortar component, because without the setting, the rest of it is just stuff that gets moved around, and so it's really important that we try to get as far along the road toward our target of the bricks and mortar costs as possible. Secondly, exhibit funding and so on is from different sources altogether, and it's often in the form of sponsorship and matching grants and things like that, but the capital funding is the hardest nut to crack, and so that's our initial focus. But the focus on funds for exhibits is ongoing, and we're going to see just what we can do in that regard. Now, there are challenges. Only about 2% to 3% of all available grant monies in this country are available to arts and culture, so we're in the narrow neck of the vase at the best of times. We had honestly thought that Canadian economy, remember, we started this five years ago, we thought the Canadian economy would be clearly out of the difficulties that it encountered and that we would be able to look to some more optimistic future. None of us predicted, none of us predicted what's happening. We also thought, and not cynically, that this is in a federal election year, and federal governments have a tendency, along with provincial governments, to try to buy us with our own money, and so in election years, there is often an increase in available funds, but again, we're shuddering a little at what this consequence may be, but nevertheless, we're going to do our best, because we're on a timeline. We have a target, we have a plan, and we're going to do the best we can for the community. And so the final point is support, and I want to emphasize this again. We've said this and said it and will continue to say it. We remain committed, as a society, to raise the money we need for the project. We are going to do our absolute level human best. We're not expecting anyone else, other than donors and granters, to help us with that project. Now, that doesn't mean that we would reject assistance, but it does mean that we remain committed. So the OMS, the Asuas Museum Society, needs and welcomes community support and involvement. Remember, this is the community's museum. You know the traditional three Ts: time, talent, and treasure. Those are ways of approaching the notion of support, and so we're looking for people's time. Time that would help us pick up pieces of the job that need to be done and help us, because we are, quite frankly, a handful of 70- to 80-year-old volunteers, and we need help. And there are people with time if they feel that the project is worthwhile, and we would take every opportunity to sell them on the fact that this is worth getting involved in. We need talent. We need expertise. There is only so much that we can do, and so I'm going to say that while we're not asking the town for things, perhaps people with town staff could find ways through BARRY to help us with some of the management and project issues that we're going to be facing, because they are more knowledgeable than we are, they're more current than we are, and so on. But you know people in this community as well who have talent and expertise, and we would appreciate anything that you might be able to do to help us identify them or approach them or talk them into coming to see us or whatever. We need help, we need time, we need expertise. And then, of course, we need contributions. Our original target was not to depend upon the community itself for a significant amount of the cost. We were going after grants and programs and foundations and corporate sponsorships, and we will do that, but we are looking for ways in which individuals or groups or organizations might be able to help us financially or in kind, because again, this is the community's museum. It's going to be here for forever, and anything beyond my lifetime is forever, so we'll do that. So here's where we are. That's the update, that's the target, that's the budget, that's where we are in terms of our plan and where we are in terms of what we need and would appreciate assistance with. Now, there was one other slide in the presentation, but in order to make the deadline and get it to you, and I wonder, Kara, if you could help. We have four upcoming events, and I'm just going to do these and be gone to questions, but we have four upcoming events which we thought that you might be interested in and wanted to let you know about. This week, by the way, is, under RDOS sponsorship, is Focus on Heritage in the South Okanagan, and so we have a poster, which is Main Street, because this is the focus of the RDOS plan, and so we're running a free-admission open house at the museum all of this week, so that members of the community...
Heritage BC.
Heritage BC, I'm sorry. Thank you, Kara. In terms of the other elements that you see before you, and could I have one of them back? My memory gets short in the way. On March 28th, we're going to have a fundraising launch in an open house. We've invited our honorary patrons, Senator Nancy Green-Reyn, to come. Whether she's able to or not, she has not been able to advise as yet, but we're going to do this at noon on that day. It'll open house all day, but an event, a program at noon that day. We're doing it at noon because inadvertently, the Desert Society has an event at 2:00 that afternoon, and we do not want to compete with other groups, and so we've worked out an arrangement whereby we will do our program at 12:00 noon on the 28th, and then people who wish to can still go to the Waterways lecture in the afternoon at 2:00. On June 13th, it's the 53rd birthday, 52nd birthday of the Museum Society, and we're going to have another open house to welcome people. When you come to the March 28th one, however, you're going to see the new military display and its reconfiguration. You're going to see the fruit stand that was built as a joint project with the secondary school, and you're going to see the last of the plasket collection has now been framed, and the plastic plasket collection will be on display. June 13th is the anniversary, and then on August 10th to 15th, a group is coming to town, a two-person team, to do a week-long hands-on workshop for adults as well as children called Species at Risk. It's a day camp, and we're doing it in cooperation with Incommemorable Desert Cultural Center and the Asuas Desert Center, so that's another event to look forward to. So if there are any questions, we would be pleased to answer them. We have several members of the board and the new building committee as well, and if I get in trouble, they'll bail me, I know. Questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Hassan, and the rest of the board, and Mrs. Burton, for taking on this project. I mean, it's kind of overwhelming. That being said, I do believe we have the best people available working on this, and I know it will be very successful. So I just, I don't even know where to begin. Thank heavens we've got all of you working on it, and absolutely, Mr. Lacy will be putting something in the paper, I'm sure, because he's been busy writing things down back there, and I think that that might be a very good way for you to get the word out about what you need. This is also on Granicus, so people can watch this at home on their computers and see your presentation. I'm certainly looking forward to the upcoming events, and I'm hoping that you're going to get lots of money in terms of what you can, so you can afford to do all these things, which look like they've been very well researched, and I know they have, because I've been part of it for... of it for a couple of years. So thank you very much to all of you for your time, your expertise, your enthusiasm, and your obvious wonderful knowledge of what it takes to put something like this together. So I'm just going to see if there's anybody at council who would like to ask a question. Counselor King?
Thank you, Mayor McCurkoff. Just want to congratulate all you fellows for keeping this movement going forward. One question, as you move forward with the HVAC, they give you the capabilities to bring in outside exhibits in, like international exhibits?
Yes, the full-blown plan had us changing up entirely the HVAC system. The Phase 1 plan has us making do with the existing system except for the archive room, which requires its own. But the architect's and engineering assessment is that it will allow us to meet the criteria for a number of traveling exhibits that are quite strict, as you know from your experience, Counselor King, with the Suri Museum. They're quite strict, but we will be able to meet those requirements and satisfy them to, I think, beyond a reasonable extent.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Rhodes?
Thank you, Mayor McCarduff. Well, Matt, great job again. Always look forward to this. I think it's every year, but I think you were back a couple of times over the last year as well. You know, as we move forward with this project, this community project that we're going through, you know, darn it all, that harsh reality of the money is always the biggest obstacle at the end of the day. The design, the ideas, the enthusiasm are always there, but you know, just a vote of confidence, if anything is achievable with the leadership that you've shown and the group of people that you have with us, I'm pretty confident that we're going to move forward with this. And there'll be lots of challenges, lots of peaks and valleys, but you know, it's, when you've got a solid group, it makes it so much easier. Just one question, I know there was nothing in the presentation, I'm wondering about the outside area as well. I'm wondering if you could comment on that a little bit. I know there's a fairly generous piece of outside area, and we'd had lots of talks about it before, and I'm wondering if that was part of the planning as well.
As far as Phase 1 is concerned, we're going to clean up outside, but the development of the west lot, as you might want to call it, between the building and Dolce Deli, that'll have to go to Phase 2. The architect's design calls for about a quarter of a million dollars to develop it in terms of an urban park from the street edge in about seven, eight meters with zerescape landscaping and that sort of thing. And then an appropriate chain-link fence for the area behind. The area behind was thought of not for rusty farm machinery but for a kind of an open, small sort of theater or presentation or gathering area and some temporary displays and things of that nature. That exit from the downstairs that we're required to put into the building will come up into that area. But our plan is to clean it up and to look at taking advantage of that space in the future for outside demonstration models, or there may be some things that we come up with that would be appropriate to situate in that outside area by way of display. As you may recall, we were at one time offered the remaining piece of the old school building down here. The one part, of course, is the mayor's office, which is attached to Town Hall. The other part of the old school is down here by the Mohawk Building. When we looked at that building and the cost of moving it and so on, it just wasn't warranted. It was going to cost a great deal more than we felt it was worth even as a display. And then, of course, having moved it, we were going to have to go to a great extent of renovating the whole thing to make it safe. So the plan is open. There is information available if you want from what the architect has proposed, but we're deferring that to Phase 2.
Thank you. Counselor Youngberg?
Thank you, Mayor McCurkoff. Boy, you folks have just done a lot of work on this project, and it looks like hours and hours of dedication.
A couple.
Yes, exactly. A couple of questions that I have is tax write-offs for a family who would like to dedicate some money to a room or to a display?
We are authorized to issue tax receipts as a nonprofit. We've got a very good record and would never have been questioned in terms of what we've done. So we have that capacity to offer a tax receipt for donations of either in kind or in cash. And we are also, we have, and if one is interested, we would share a copy of our fundraising plan. There's a whole section that deals with acknowledgements and recognitions. There will be recognition on actual displays and exhibits as well as recognition for general contributions. So there will be a recognition program as well as a way of providing a tax receipt.
Okay, so March 28th in the fundraising open house?
Yes.
That would be a great opportunity for anybody in the community to look at discussing that with you.
By all means, and we will hope that people will take that opportunity. And I don't want to, I'm going to just do a flash. The fundraising thermometer is under construction. We have permission from the Home Building Center people to mount it on the building. And there is a piece of the bulb already filled, and that represents the community's contribution of 1.26 million plus other monies that we've raised so far. So we are underway, but that visible way will be revealed. I didn't tell anybody. We'll reveal that on the 28th.
Good. Counselor Campbell?
With discussing new themes and exhibits, what, if any, involvement does the Yosueus Indian Band have in helping with that content or creating that content?
We've met with the Yosueus Indian Band. We've proposed a way of involvement, including the sponsorship of an exhibit within the museum by them in keeping with our design parameters and so on. It's an ongoing issue. As council probably knows, Charlotte Stringham sits on the board of the Museum Society as a representative of OIB. We have an open relationship with them. We hold the Inkombe Day School Art Collection in joint stewardship with them, and so we want to complement them and their operation in this museum and ensure that their voice is an authentic voice in this museum.
Thanks, Matt.
Well, thank you very much. You've given us lots of information to look at, and I'm sure that this is going to succeed because you've got such a wonderful group of volunteers and people that work with you and anything that we can do to help you, we would be, I'm sure, we would be happy to consider it, so...
Help us find people. Talk to your friends, say you know people that we don't know. You can talk to them in ways that we can't talk to them. We need to rally resources in the community behind the project because it is the community's new museum.
Good. Well, thank you very much to all of you from the Museum Society for attending and showing Next on our agenda is Cameron Baum from the RDOS Solid Waste Management Coordinator. So Cameron, welcome to, and tell us about what we should know about solid waste management.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council, for having me today. I'm very open to answering any questions on solid waste management. In particular, my presentation today is based on a presentation I gave to the board directors of the RDOS. It's an update to our organic management assessment of public properties, which includes the Yosueus landfill. So I believe that Counselor Rhodes was there on the occasion when I presented. So I'm just going to go through this, and if there's any further questions on recycling, composting, or other type of garbage, I can certainly talk to that as well. So the organic management project, it's a multi-year project. We've identified between 30% to 50% of our current waste, after recyclables have been removed, is made of organics that could be composted. We've commenced both a public and a private assessment of the available resources to manage waste that's organic, which includes food waste, yard waste, biosolids, which is generated in some communities from their wastewater treatment plants, soil, paper, and wood. We've hired a firm to look at the public sector portion of this, which is Tetra Tech EBA, and they've been involved in developing feasibility studies and order modeling of nine different publicly-owned properties, including the Yosueus landfill. And so the initial assessment was complete, and that's what I presented to the board. And I don't know if a copy is available to council and the mayor today, but certainly have a copy available to download if you guys don't have it already. So just quickly, we looked at Princeton, Princeton landfill, as well as a second site there. We're looking at Princeton as potentially dealing mainly with waste from Princeton and Electoral Area H, which is the surrounding area around Princeton. And so those two sites, we're going to be looking at to see which would be the better site for food waste and other yard waste and wood waste composting at those sites. The RDOS is part owner with the village of Karamias of a property just east of Karamias. We've rejected that as an area to do feasibility studies in. Although it's publicly owned, there's certainly a lot of issues there, including it being within the ALR, close to a home, right here in area assessment regulation problems, and a very high probability of a native species being on that property. So we've recommended that that not proceed to feasibility study phase. Karamias landfill is a small transfer station. We're looking at waste from the village of Karamias and the surrounding areas. How best if we could deal with it there in the Karamias landfill or bring it to a more centralized facility? So this is probably the meat of it for you guys in terms of the Yosueus landfill. So the Yosueus landfill is very well run by a contractor. You guys have an excellent compost facility there now that deals with yard waste, primarily some food waste that's left over from fruit waste packing plants generally. So you guys do have some fruit waste that goes through that would be classified as food waste. But you don't take all food waste there. You don't take any kind of like putrescibles from homes or businesses. You don't take any kitchen scraps, things like that. So what the feasibility study is going to focus on is how can we enhance the existing infrastructure to allow for incorporation of some or maybe all of the different organic wastes from Yosueus and Electoral Area A? And how would that look? What kind of cost would be associated with that? And our key concern for the Yosueus landfill is odor. There are odor concerns associated with any type of these facilities, and the cost to manage them can be quite high. You have to build buildings to basically allow for the waste to be dropped off and moved properly. You may need buildings to allow for the first and initial turning of the materials. There are some technologies that use gore cover, just like a Gore-Tex jacket, which actually allows for odor to be trapped, but water to come in and out. So there's some innovative technologies that have been developed over the last 15 years that we're going to look and see if they're applicable to this site. The odor modeling is really why we hired Tetra Tech EBA. They are using what we've found to be the most effective form of odor modeling. It's often used for wastewater treatment plants and other compost facilities. The concerns that we have for odor there is if you look at the blue line running through this air photo of the landfill, cold air, especially when we have the inversions in the wintertime in the Okanagan, that cold air can collect, and it can really intensify the odor, allowing that odor to be moving down these cold air drainages, which essentially this is now. It's no longer an active water source, but it's an active air cooling source for air to move across landfill and down into there. And then you're looking at homes affected along Yosueus Lake, which is a key concern of ours. So the feasibility study is going to be focused intensely at the odor issue primarily to sort of see how best we can do it. That's our major concern for this facility. You don't, not only do you have homes downhill, but you also have the Yosueus Desert Center very close by as well. So how do we manage the odors? And how much would it cost to manage that? And again, looking at the nine public sites and potentially more public sites, private sites on private property, which is the best-case scenario in terms of cost-effectiveness? So is it more cost-effective to ship materials from the Yosueus area to a centralized site somewhere else? That may be the case, and that's what this whole feasibility study is looking at, is not just one option, but at least nine public options and potentially more private options to see which is the most cost-effective way of dealing with waste locally. The Oliver landfill has less concerns in terms of odor because we've got an active feedlot, we don't have many neighbors, and the landfill itself is based away from the community. So there are some benefits here, and we're going to be looking at the Oliver landfill as a high potential area to deal with food waste or other things that are putrescible or have strong odors. Okanagan Falls landfill, this landfill is now, it's based in an area where we don't think we'll be able to do food waste composting, but we are looking at developing soil. Compost, when it's fully composted, can be a soil medium to use on landfills, so it can save a lot of money in terms of bringing imported soils to either close a landfill or to use it as alternative daily cover. So we're looking there at Okanagan Falls. Campbell Mountain landfill, it's our largest centralized facility. Most of our trucking fleets, including the BFI trucks that pick up a lot of the residential waste in Yosueus, they bring it to the Penticton area. So we're looking very closely at Campbell Mountain landfill as potentially being a central receiving area for, if not residential waste, then maybe commercial waste, which is much harder to deal with because you have, if you can imagine, a kitchen generates, a commercial kitchen generates a lot more food waste than the average home. And the average home also adds yard waste to that mix, which helps keep the odor down. So we're looking at the Campbell Mountain landfill as a place where we might be able to cite a more centralized facility. And then the Summerland landfill, this with Summerland's come along with huge acreage of property just to the north of their existing facility. It's flat land, it's close to services, including water, wastewater, electricity. So we're looking at this as a very high potential for all the organic waste from the RDOS could probably end up at a site of this nature. And so we'll be looking at that in terms of the cost for transportation, the cost for what kind of technology may need to go in there. And also, in all of these sites, odor modeling is going to be our key concern to make sure that the people downwind or downhill from that site aren't affected by odor. So right now, we're commencing our feasibility studies. We'll be looking at the town of Yosueus landfill as one of those, and so we'll be doing that in the near future. We've already done sort of the initial assessments, so we've got all the data we need to complete those feasibility studies. We're now commencing expression of interest with private composting sites. We've already done some consultation with a number of private compost site operators or potential compost site operators that would like to look at dealing with food waste, yard waste, wood chips, and biosolids. So we do already have some potential private properties that may come on board. We'll be doing a request for proposals later on this year to give us the actual pricing, and then we'll do a comparison. And this will be a large, call it triple bottom line. We look at the social costs, the environmental costs, and then, of course, the cost costs in comparing both public and private sites, looking at transportation, how will we collect waste. So it'll be a very comprehensive review that'll give us recommendations to bring forward to not only the RDOS but also to municipalities such as the town of Yosueus. And we hope to get this completed by late 2015 to bring forward these recommendations, including the approaches. We will be asking the Yosueus staff to, if they can't participate directly, to at least comment on our initial drafts of these recommendations to allow us to move forward so that we can bring it forward to the board and to councils sort of as a whole. And hopefully, it's a way to look at food waste and biosolids and organic waste as a resource that's good for our communities and not just as a waste product, which currently they are just going into our landfill and filling up our landfills. So we're looking at the whole business case of how best can we produce compost that's not only good for residents but also for farmers? And we've already conducted a few studies with people associated but not directly associated with the Agricultural Research Center in Summerland to look at what kind of compost local agriculturalists might need to be applied so that we can design our facilities to actually create that locally. And this been a lot of success with compost. And there's been, I think, for the growers, I think there is, a lot of growers aren't using compost effectively yet, and that's also something that we're working on is how to educate growers because they sometimes have a misunderstanding of what compost is and how it can be applied, the level it could be applied, like this much or this much, and where it can be applied around rootstock. So we're finding that there's lots of different projects that are associated with this. Federation of Canadian Municipalities has granted us $175,000. That'll pay up to 50% of this project cost, and that was just announced when I did this presentation a few weeks ago at the RDOS board.
Well, thank you very much, Cameron. It certainly, when you look at something like this, it seems to be a fairly easy thing to deal with, but it obviously is not. It's much more complicated than initially, as happens with most projects. I just think that it's interesting to look back at years ago in the orchards, everybody burned. They would, you know, cut their, prune their trees, and there was large fires everywhere. Now, they're pretty good about grinding it up and using it as, I assume, fertilizer for the next year. So we are slowly thinking about that. I'm assuming that what you're going to have to do is by... I'm assuming that what you're going to have to do is buy particular new trucks to go with this. Would that be it, or would the present trucks that are being used to pick up recycling and garbage be able to be adapted to use this? Do you have, is that part of what you're looking at?
Well, and I'll let Barry clarify it even further if you think that's important, but the town of Asuys, Oliver, Penticton, Summerland, and the RDOS, we all work with the same contractor. So what we're looking at is potentially dovetailing the final closure of our current contract with a new contract, which would allow us to seamlessly change that if we do need new trucks. And to be honest, we don't know yet. We don't know if we're going to need new trucks, whether the sidepackers are going to be okay, or whether we need something else. I think at the same time, we've had requests from some municipalities to look at containerized pickup. So all that's part of our program. Right now, the RDOS, we haven't extended our, I haven't extended our contract yet, but the town of Asuys, I believe, has. I believe the town of Asuys has till 2018.
Yes, we, as part of the MMBC program, we extended our contract.
With BFI Canada Progressive Waste, yeah. So right now, the RDOS, we haven't extended ours yet. We're looking at 2016 as the end of the five-year term, whereas the town of Asuys and the other municipalities have extended theirs for two more years. So what we're going to look at is how to sort of dovetail it so that the different municipalities and local governments, like the RDOS, can kind of work at the feasibility study's time, so that once we know where we're going to put it, then we're going to know how long it's going to take to build it, and then we can have our contracts expire, and then the new equipment can come in as needed by that, those dates. So there is some flexibility on that 2018 time, by about, you guys have about a year and a half, where the town of Asuys can then declare when and how the extent of the contract is then going to be expired. You can ask Barry about the specifics.
There's nothing else I can add. I have a question, though.
Sure, go ahead.
So there's a lot of work to do, there's a lot of water under the bridge. What is your, what do you have as a target date potentially for having a regional composting site up and running?
It does depend. So if we can get the recommendation in by the end of this year, it could be a year to two years before we get everything rolling in terms of construction. And it does depend on the type of technologies, the potential for very high capital technologies, or this potential for some sites, very remote sites away from homes, very low capital technologies, which might take only a few months to build. So it does depend on the location that's chosen and the type of technology that's found to be the most, but depending on how long it takes, it does depend on whether it's private sector or public sector. So two years is what I'm hoping from 2015, which will put us into 2017, which I think is really the thing we're trying to shoot for is 2017.
So when we take a look at waste management, should there be a regional program, Asuys' involvement in it would basically be voluntary, right? In terms of, because we run our own landfill, if we choose to do our own thing and continue in our own way, we could do that. But again, looking at how contemporary waste management is and composting, it's something we'll be looking at.
And through worship, just to follow up with Barry, yeah, everything that we do with this is a planning, it's all planning, it's not requirements. The RDOS has no power over the town of Asuys, so we can just give advice, and hopefully it's advice that's well received.
Thank you. I read recently in the Vancouver paper that they are dealing with this issue right now of trying to get restaurants and buildings and apartments and so on to deal with it. So my assumption is that you're going to be sort of looking at that, learning from what the problems and the successes that they have? And are, there must be other places that already have this in, that is working, right?
That's correct, yeah. Currently in British Columbia, Inaymo, Capital Regional District, Metro Van, and then we have a small program in Kootenay Boundary, just to the east of us. They're all collecting different types of food waste. So yeah, we do have some good examples in British Columbia to look at in terms of multifamily and commercial. And it's, that's, for me, it's one of the harder ones, because we don't currently control that waste. But it's something that, over the long term, and it may not be something that happens all at once, we may want to look at doing residential food waste collection before we move to commercial, or vice versa, we may want to do commercial before you residential. The idea of this feasibility study is to kind of give us the guidelines and direction in terms of how do we do this? And it may be, it may be much longer than 2000, the facility might be built, but may not have all the waste going to it right away.
Sure.
Allowing us time to do the proper communication, education, and for us, maybe services, if we want new services for the business and multifamily communities.
Thank you. Councillor Rhodes.
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. Well, thanks, Cameron. Very informative, again. I have a real disadvantage when I start thinking about organic waste, because I think I think about it every day. And during our strategic planning, I tried to advance it a little bit, but you're doing such a good job with this whole program, and there's really not much that we can do from this end. I understand that Asuys is way down on the selection list, the harsh reality is, is that, you know, we don't fill all of the criteria, but I wanted to knock down a few barriers regarding the odor concerns. You know, yes, we've had odor concerns in our community, but primarily from our ponds rather than the organic waste program that we have. We have a lot of good things going for us, we have experience, we run in a very successful landfill in our community, and part of that landfill is a good, solid, something that really makes sense in our community, is our composting program that we have. And I know it's a basic one where we just had to grow it and we put it out there, but at the end of the day, it's pretty successful for our community. When you start looking at other communities that are high on the selection list, like Oliver, that type of thing, you know, they have world-class wineries, both on the north and south of that, and cascading down the hill area, that have world-class restaurants in them, and, you know, commercial hotel arrangements and that kind of thing. And I hope that doesn't, you know, influence the decision. So I know I'm grasping for straws here, but, you know, I've always been hopeful that we would be, you know, included in the high priority of this, you know that from the beginning when this started. And, you know, as we go, you know, sometimes we need to knock down these barriers. I know it's gone out for a study right now, so you're influenced over this, but if you ever get asked, you know, I think a composting facility in our community could be more successful than the initial reactions that we've gotten at this point, so.
Just to clarify, yeah, certainly the town of Asuys could do their own system, and that will also be part of our feasibility study. So political risk is part of our planning process, it has to be. Just realistically, it does happen that political risk cannot weigh the costs of any of the other three triple bottom line costs. So when we look at that, we want to make sure every community understands what it would cost them to do it themselves. There are some very, very good systems that may allow for residential food waste mixed with yard waste to come to the Asuys landfill, which I think would be a very limited potential for odor. But when you look at the commercial waste, that's my big concern for, and you'd be looking at major capital upgrades. So that's where I'd be, that's where I'm trying to not say I know what the answer is, I'm just saying we have to be cautious. And I just wanted to make sure that you're aware that we do recognize there's risks here, as well as risk at all of our facilities, including the Oliver landfill. The odor mapping itself, we're going to be using our own GIS equipment to hone in on key areas which cannot have the odors. And if you look at the odor potential mapping that they do, it really shows you where the high risks are, and then you can capitalize this infrastructure to reduce odors to the point where there's no risk to anybody. From day one, we felt that if there's odor impact to residents, schools, businesses, we probably can't do it. We have to make sure we have enough capital spent on that site to ensure that those people aren't, because it's their private property, and as a local government, we can't, we can't do that to our taxpayers. So, yeah, we'll be looking very hard at that, and that will be part of our feasibility study as we present to the councils and to the board, showing them what the odor modelling shows us, and why we went for that particular technology, whether, because they'll see a big difference between a very low-cost setup in the back 40 to somewhere that has a high risk will be very expensive, and that's just the nature of composting.
Good. Anything else? Well, thank you very much, Cameron. We certainly appreciate your expertise on this, and we look forward to hearing from you again at the end of the year when you've come up with your new plan.
It'll be more than just, it'll be us, hopefully.
Thank you very much. The next that we have, we have a business, Miller Springs Limited, request to support. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There are some, a letter to upgrade from single-phase to three-phase power, and a letter to Fortis. So one was to the town of Asuys, and one was to Fortis. So just as, before we even talk about this, I do know that the RDOS has put forth a resolution to SILGA to deal with this particular issue. It has already gone, and it will be dealt with. It was, I believe it was the whole RDOS agreed that this was something that was worth bringing forward. So in a sense, it has been dealt with. So how should we deal with this?
Okay, yeah. This item was placed on the agenda just to see if council wanted any additional information prior to making a decision whether or not it would go to the regular agenda for, to get direction for a letter of support or not. I think they're still looking probably for not only regional district support, but individual municipalities. So I'm not aware of the motion going to SILGA, so I'd have to get that information, but at this point in time, the ask from the administration is, would you like this to go on to the regular agenda for a vote or a direction relative to a letter of support, or just take it as information?
Councillor Rhodes.
I feel fairly confident in saying that I think we should support this through a letter. I know this might not be the right venue for a resolution, but I don't know if it has to go to the public meeting or not, I think we can do that right here.
Okay, if council prefers to do it that way.
That's my opinion, I think we should support them. They're a valuable member of our, not necessarily our community, but certainly close by, and many of the people that work there and have been going through the improvements out there are people within our community, and I think it's a worthwhile thing. I don't understand really what the problem is with.
Yeah, why?
You have to bring all new power in.
Yeah, well, it's not a unique situation. I guess what I, I don't understand what the reluctance is, I know it's always about the money, but.
Yes, Councillor Youngbrook.
Just a little bit, because I do own property right up by Miller Springs, and one of the huge concerns, and why this, I think, why they're politicking to increase the power is because they're going to increase the water consumption, at least, I believe it's going from 450 gallons per minute to 5,000 gallons per minute. And the reason that they're increasing the consumption of the water is because they're installing a bottling plant, and they have to meet the needs of the Chinese request for the export of water. So in order to try to give some sort of influence into the concerns of the consumption of water, is if they are given the three-phase power, of course, the bottling plant goes in, and then they need the supply of water in order to meet the cost of putting, of increasing the power from one to three phases. So that's what was brought up at the meeting in Midway.
Okay, and the other thing, I believe there is a new, I'm not sure what the name, but it is a Water Act that the province has put in to look at this, so I'm assuming they've dealt with that as well. Am I correct that that was?
Yes, and that's one of the reasons I brought to council for direction, is that there could be some philosophical differences on council relative to the use of water in this particular method, and whether or not that particularly, it's industry versus water availability. And certainly, the Water Act will deal more so with the cost of water, because my understanding is companies like this were accessing this resource basically for nothing. There will be a charge involved. From what I've seen most recently, there is still a big difference between, or will be a big difference, because we will have to pay for water as well, a big difference between what is going to be the commercial cost for water and what would be the public cost for water, where the commercial cost will be lower than the public cost.
Is there anyone else that, okay.
Just one last comment to that, is that the meeting did end with the recommendation by the regional director sending the request to someone who studies the flow of water, because what the concern is, is the water coming down to east Asuys is going to be affected by the same water supply. So the APC members from our electoral LA were at the meeting as well, to sort of get some idea of the concerns that may possibly reflect some changes in the water supply to our area, so.
So if that's the case, and there are quite a few people already involved in this, how do we send a letter of support without having the information about the Water Act and everything else? That's, I guess, my concern.
Well, and that's part of the decision-making I'm bringing to council, is, you know, what kind of information would you require prior to providing a letter of support for this Fortis request? And, you know, where does it sit on in terms of the priority list of the activities that we involve? Could you just elaborate a little bit more on what is going to the SILGA convention as a resolution? Is it something relative to the water supply, or is it something relative to the supply of power?
It's the three-phase power issue, not specifically as relates to the water. Now, and I don't have it in front of me, but I just remember seeing it and thinking, okay, everybody in the RDOS has obviously agreed that that is something that's worth asking Fortis about, about the three-phase power, and having a look at that. But I could, I think at this point, what we should do is gain a little bit more information about how this will affect everybody. I will see if I can find that information from the RDOS, and perhaps we could accept this for information at the moment, and put this, see if we can ask administration to find out a little bit more, and I'll see what I can do. Would that make sense?
Okay, I can, again, you know, just try and find from sources if the water aspect has been addressed, and in what particular manner it's been addressed, so that that can become part of an information package.
And how it will affect this, it could. Okay, is everybody in agreement? Councillor Rhodes.
The fact that Fortis, so this is a circumstance between Miller Springs and Fortis, correct? This really doesn't have anything to do with the water, it's their reluctance to put it in there because of a financial consideration, is that, is that a good assumption, or?
I would kind of have to disagree with you.
You're, I'm sorry. I kind of have to disagree. It is the impact of, between Fortis and Springs, but I think now hearing more about the water, because these facilities want the power to build a machine to make bottles to put the water in, so there is a long process of could not impact this. That's all I'm saying. I like the idea of bringing power to them, but I don't think we have enough information to make that final decision.
Yes.
So at the end of the day, they will create their own power. I believe there's a mandate to move this. One is not contingent on the other. There will be a generator put in, and whether that has, you know, that has, you know, immense environmental concerns as well, I believe that their mandate of increasing their business will move forward here regardless.
So what are you suggesting? That we?
Well, I already made my suggestion at the beginning.
That we, that we should support this? That was what you said, am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm just not sure whether, I personally think we should support this unless we find out a little more information. And I'm just wondering if we could find out some more information for the next meeting, and then, do they have a time limit on this? I didn't see that.
At the point, I think the application is already made.
Is there a feeling that we will?
January 21st.
Yeah.
Oh.
But I think it's pretty easy to get the information from.
But it would have to.
The stream of information that's been sent.
Be brought back to the next meeting, that's all.
Oh, right, I see what you're saying.
In two weeks. Does that make sense, Mr. Manco?
We'll send out and see what kind of responses we get to finding it. We'll send out and see what kind of responses we get to finding information, if that's the direction of council. It is okay to provide an administrative direction through resolution, so if Counselor Rhodes would like to pursue this through resolution, that's perfectly fine, and see what kind of support he can gather from council.
Well, I think the writing might be on the roll, Paul, so, yeah, I won't do that at this point.
Is there anyone else that would like to make a resolution to, and it's really allowing the administration to pursue finding some more information to bring back to us?
That's right. We would try as best we can to try and find out information about what the water impacts are. I guess also, I don't know what the impacts are in our community relative to what is this project they're proposing. Will it have an economic development spinoff for us that in fact would, you know, council would be able to weigh whether supporting the provision of that service is in the best interest of the community versus the impacts on the water supply.
Yeah, I personally feel that we should be looking for a little bit more information before we decide, especially of the concerns of the people that are doing, concerned about the water on the east side. So.
One last.
Yes.
And me owning the property up there really has nothing to do with my feeling, it was just that's why I got all the information, was because of the location of the property. I don't live up there and never have, but it was just all brought to my face, and I'm looking at it saying, hmm, this is sort of a concern. And so the facts that I've been sent, I can just pass on.
Good. So we need a resolution to allow you to gather some more information and bring it back to us.
Yes, just a resolution providing direction to the administration to seek out additional information about the Miller Springs project and its impacts on the water supply and the Osueas community.
And the economic.
Thank you. Are you, and is there someone who would like to second that? May I second it? Okay, is there anybody who would like to speak to that before we take the vote? Yes, Counselor Rhodes.
Well, I would speak against that motion. I think the information that is needed is in their request here. I understand the importance of how withdrawing water out of that, putting the bottles to sell other places, and the impact that it might have on it, but I certainly don't see that anywhere in this request. The request is to provide power for their bottling, whatever the terminology that they use, and they produce the bottles and that type of thing. The fact that they may expand their business, I would hope that they would be a credible business that would study that and not harm our environment in their quest, and I don't, I've never seen that in their past business operations or anything like that, so, yeah, so that's my input into that.
Anybody else like to speak to this? Okay, so we will take a vote. How many, would you please read us the resolution, Ms. Scott?
Moved and seconded and resolved that administration be requested to seek additional information about the Miller Springs project and its impacts on the water supply in the community.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion? Against? Thank you, that passed. I would, I think that's all that we have on the agenda, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Thank you. Campbell King at 10:35. Thank you very much, all in favor. Okay, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Lacy. Can we take?